Next is our 6.6, sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District, Board of Directors, LCAQMD, fiscal year 25-26, draft budget hearing for budget units 8799-8798. And we have Mr. Doug Gerhardt here.
Good morning, and I think we got this now?
Yep.
Okay. So, this is our annual draft budget hearing. It's basically an opportunity to present the budget and take public comment. It's a requirement of the California Health and Safety Code that we do this. Health and Safety Code, Section 40131. And we've done our 30-day legal notice, and it's a requirement that's, you know, kind of unique to air districts compared to the counties. So with that, you know, we have everything in the memo and our full budget. So, I'm kind of going to skim over everything, and then we'll make time to have discussion as appropriate and kind of go through whatever your questions and concerns are at that point. So with that, the budget is, you know, a full packet by itself, and we'll go through that as needed. And then for the following items, the requested board actions, you know, of course, we ask that you approve the draft budget as proposed. And then the next item is, air districts are, you know, generally not expected to have further decreases in state subvention with the state budget crisis again. There's always a risk to state funding of air districts, which would be a significant hit to the air district. It's one of the only other funding sources we have other than permit fees. So with that, you know, if we lose state subvention, then permit fees have to make up the difference in the mandated activities of the district. So we just want to go on record as continuing to be opposed to reductions in state subvention to air districts. We don't expect it to happen, but it's usually a last-minute. It's one of the negotiating things that the state uses to, when they're looking at balancing budgets and stuff, is air district funding is one of those things that's always on the block. Now, staff, traditionally, we've taken a very active role in CAPCOA, which is the State Association, California Association of Air Pollution Control Officers. And in the last couple of years, we have kind of backed out of that, just because we haven't had staffing and time to be very active in that. And so our goal at this point, of course, we're still not going to, we're keeping track of what's happening, but we're not as active as we would like to be because, you know, we are a unique air district, and we're the only air district in the state that meets all requirements. So the state and legislature and other air districts and federal officials, our participation in CAPCOA keeps them aware that attainment districts are different and that we should not have the same requirements as places like LA and San Joaquin Valley and other areas that are dealing with severe issues. So with that, you know, we're just, I'm just making you aware that, you know, when we come to full staffing and we have time, we have your support to get back involved in that as we go forward. We don't expect that to happen this year, but, you know, if something happens and we do get caught up and with everything, then, you know, we have that option if need be, or if there's an issue that comes up that we really need to participate in because it could have significant effects. So then with that, you know, the next item is, you know, districts are mandated to enforce state and federal laws. Many of these things are unfunded. We have a lot of issues going, you know, with health risk and doing risk assessments, and we have a hotspots program that we're being mandated to do reports on. Federal government is cutting back on a lot of programs, so National Weather Service, even their forecasting, you know, they still do forecasting, but now it's a lot more modeling versus actually having a forecaster available. So Lake County, as you know, is a little bit unique in our topography. We're not just a big open area, you know, around the lake we are, but everywhere else in the county, we are not. So we rely, we were relying a lot on forecasting, and we have to do a lot more forecasting and that type of activity ourselves, just because those forecasts look at a macro scale versus the micro scale that we deal with when we're dealing with impacts from sources and things. So there's a lot of issues that are going into that. And so with that, the whole point of that whole discussion is we have a lot of things that we're mandated to do, that we have to do as part of our permitting process and other processes. And so some of the voluntary activities are still going to be put on hold for the foreseeable future until we are able to catch up on mandated activities. And with the cutbacks in the state and federal assistance, there are a lot more things being pushed down to us. So that slows our process down. Okay, so of course, you know, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of issues with recruitment and maintaining a fully-staffed, a district for quite a few years. We haven't really been fully-staffed in almost 10 years, just because we have, there's just regular turnover. So we are continuing, and we request the board's guidance and direction, I guess, to continue to work with HR and admin to develop methods to retain staff and to continue to improve recruitment efforts. So, because we will need to increase our staffing in the coming years with all the new programs, and assuming that we have to start planning for a higher turnover rate than we would like to see, we are going to have to have people continually in the training process to take those positions. So, which means we'll have to have more staff on, available and training at all times. So that's going to be a long-term effort, and, but we want to continue working on it this year and seeing what we can work out. So those are the recommended directions. We have a number of board awareness items. Some of these you are aware of, but, so it's kind of a, just a general update on some of these things, like the Geysers Air Monitoring Program. You know, we're, with that, going through major changes, we're looking at a new MOU this year, or this fiscal year, I should say. The last time the MOU, it's been, I think 2006 was the last MOU, or somewhere, you know, it's been 20-plus years since the last time it was updated. And with Northern Sonoma County backing out of a lot of the administrative side, we're having to take on a lot of extra work because we're the impacted side of the hill. So everything blows to Lake County, from Sonoma County and Lake County, it all blows into our community. It's very rare that there's an impact in Sonoma County. So the increase in workload and things is coming, and we are still working with admin and county council, auditor, treasury to come up with ways to try and take on some of those tasks through a consultant or a contractor. But it's a slow process because there's a lot of uniqueness to the way GAMP runs, because, you know, GAMP is not a legal entity, it is a consortium, and it's all funded through industry, so it's non-governmental funds. But if it's held by a government agency, then what standard do you go by? Do you go by standard, you know, for government accounting, or do you go by private industry accounting? And so there's this back and forth where GASP requirements versus private funding, the two financial systems don't mesh well. And so we're trying to work through all of those issues right now, still. And it's just, it's a slow process. So, anyway, long story short, GAMP issues are coming, they're continuing, and they are taking a lot of time. So, next issue, state legislature passed, I believe they passed the bill, AB 914, I have to double-check on that, but it's either passed or it's in the works for, and they believe it's going to pass, which requires, which could require us to do indirect source reporting, and that's a new thing for us. We do deal with a lot of indirect sources, usually on complaint basis, but if we have to do annual reporting and tracking and stuff, then that's where permitting and other issues, the cost is going to significantly increase. The legislature is not providing any funding for it, because air districts have fee authority. So they expect us to pass fees to cover costs associated with this program and all the other programs that we deal with. So another, you know, this is kind of continuing on the same theme, but the state legislature and ARB have a kind of one-size-fits-all for districts. So that's their philosophy, and it comes in all sorts of programs. So let's make things simple for the small districts, means, you know, we go from a 10-page guidance document to a 2,000-page guidance document on grant programs and things. You know, it can be, it can be very challenging. So our goal is, of course, to stay engaged in some of these issues and continue to work to represent the district and push to implement programs in the most efficient manner possible for the local community, because large districts can absorb a lot of those extra requirements and extra costs, small rural areas cannot. So it's a constant battle of who needs what and what can we get as an offset to minimize those impacts. So we've been fairly successful in at least reducing some of those impacts through the past, but, you know, it's an ongoing battle. And every year, the last three to five years, we've had significant increase in air quality-related legislation going forward. So there are a lot of things that are coming that have, could have significant impacts, and we're still battling to minimize those impacts in Lake County. So, of course, I mentioned the air toxics program. Right now, there's, of course, there's three different emissions inventory and toxics reporting requirements at three different sections of the state, and they all kind of covered slightly different topics, slightly different sources, but they're all basically the same work, just different sources and different types of reports, and they all want different things, and they don't want to coordinate. So we have three separate reports being worked on right now, and one of them is relating to a potential lawsuit, so that one has top priority to get done by the end of the year. And we're looking at that taking anywhere from another three to six months. Another, a number of air districts have hired consultants for this, and it's anywhere from 100,000 to 300,000 is what they're paying consultants to do the work that we're doing in-house. So that's another one. So in the coming years, we don't know if it's going to happen this year, but it's on their radar. EPA has a new asset management program that they've been moving forward with the last three to four years. And basically what they're doing is they are requiring a, they're defining lifespan and replacement frequency schedules for equipment. So everything air monitoring will have a lifespan and a replacement schedule, which means, you know, anywhere from, anywhere from every five to 10 years, we will have to replace all of our monitoring equipment. And each piece of monitoring equipment ranges from $25,000 to $50,000 apiece. So we're, you know, and we have probably 15 different pieces of equipment at the moment. So between geothermal and our ambient monitoring and stuff, so we don't, we just, we don't know exactly what it's going to impact yet, but at a minimum, it'll be five to eight, and at the most should be 15 or so. So the potential for a significant impact is there, and we just don't have the, they're still working on the program, and we don't know if it might be put on pause for a few years. It might, you know, it might not happen in the next four years, but it's probably going to happen, we just don't know exactly how soon. A few more things on our list. Particular monitoring program, you know, we have air monitoring equipment that, you know, is, we've been running for 20-plus years, we've met attainment with it, and the state and EPA have wanted us to replace it with other equipment. The other equipment is not passing certification and QA requirements, they're having lots of trouble with it, and we don't want to take the risk of losing attainment over something that is not steady and reliable. So there's, we have grant funds to do this, but we're, we cannot justify moving forward on that until we know the equipment is stable, and we've made that clear to EPA and the state, and it's kind of a, we're having this little back-and-forth battle, and just wanted you to be aware of that, that we're not going to put attainment at risk over equipment that's not 100% reliable. So, and there's potential that we could get this waived, and, you know, at the end of the year, too. So, because the wildfires will have fallen off our data. So ozone monitoring program has been, well, is currently being significantly impacted. The state is basically stopping most of their support for the program. So they have been doing calibrations, they come out twice a year, calibrate our equipment, they come out and do audits. We do the daily and weekly and monthly maintenance and operations and all the stuff, but they come out and actually do the physical calibration of it. They have decided that they will no longer do that, and so in order for us to, we're still, we have to have an in-person meeting with them, and we had, we had to put that off just for the other issues that we're dealing with. But basically what it's going to come down to is we're going to have to purchase more equipment, and we're going to have to have dedicated staff that can now calibrate equipment, because we haven't done that, because right now, we're required to have five people to do quality assurance, monitoring and quality assurance on our ambient monitoring data. That's what we're required by the state and EPA. We don't have that, but now as we add more requirements, if we do calibrations, that's another person that has to be added, so we'll have to have six. You know, and there's, it just keeps adding to the, what we can do and the limited staff that we have. They want everyone to be separate, so the monitoring, or the person operating the equipment has to be separate from the person who's checking the data, separate from the person calibrating, who's separate from the person who's doing audits, who's separate from the supervisor, and then the APCO sign off on the data. So you have all these different levels that is being, that are being required, and right now, I've been signing every level. So, but, you know, that puts our data at risk, is what's happening. So, so just so you're aware, we have more requirements, and it's, we are trying to avoid that and making the point that the state is, if they're eliminating support, we're going to have problems, and they need to back away from that. But we haven't had that meeting to find out exactly. We've heard this through the others that have had a meeting yet. So, so when I have that meeting and we get the details and they give us their plan and what we're supposed to be doing, then of course, we'll have to come back and have a more detailed discussion to see where we go. So that's, probably the most significant one, is that last one on some of the things that are coming that are going to impact us. So summary, you know, the proposed budget, units for the district are currently balanced, costs have significantly increased over the last five years, fees are, we are hoping will increase. We do have a number of projects coming, new geothermal power plant, we have the burn program, revenue that's now coming to the district instead of the fire agencies. Excuse me, so there are a number of things that are changing, but we will be looking at increasing staffing and as we move forward. So we do have a lot of training that we're going to have to be doing in the coming year or two to bring people up to speed. So, so with that, I will end my, end my long rambling presentation, and then we can go into the details and questions.
Any questions? Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, don't quote me on it, but it sounds like AB 914 was tabled. Last I see, status ordered to inactive file at the request of Assembly Member Garcia, and that was on June 2nd.
Okay.
So, maybe it will remain there, or maybe it will come back to life and be resuscitated.
Okay.
But appreciate your presentation and what you've submitted. I just want to make a quick statement before I go on. There is, in my opinion, an absolute disconnect between the state and CARB and the reality of what we're doing here on the ground. CARB was at a CSAC conference, I believe it was the chair, I just had her name, but I accidentally clicked off of the tab there, and I said, "We're from Lake County, we have some of the cleanest air in America." And her response was, "Oh, it's not that clean." We're in the top 25 counties of all of the United States, and that's how CARB feels about the quality of our air. And so that, to me, shows the disconnect of the efforts that are being made and the level that we're at. There is no acknowledgement, there's no kudos, there's no, here's the prize, it's more of a threat that you will lose attainment, that's the prize, as you continue getting threatened. So I wish there was a way to change that, but absolutely for the number two, to oppose any further state subvention, 100%. In your budget, from what I understand, your reserves from '24, '23, '24, '25, and '25, '26 are basically the same at about $320,000. You had some carryover, if I remember correctly, about $540,000. Obviously, you had some staffing difficulties, so that's probably where most of the savings come from. But you're also talking about some potential hardship, and based on a response you provided to me, that you're looking at, the revenues are using the current fees, not the proposed fees that are being proposed that we just discussed, and it's coming back to us for some kind of approval. I can't use a crystal ball and tell you exactly what will happen, but being the fact that your fees are from 1996, I doubt that we will keep them exactly at the 1996 ones, most likely, they will go up to a certain amount. And so for the fact that you're using current fees rather than potential fees, that will increase your revenues, is there any way of increasing your reserves to kind of protect yourself against what the state might do and not stay at 320 where you've been for the last three years? It's appreciated you haven't dipped into it, but I'm just concerned that the state seems to have this really big willingness to make things more difficult because they see it as the right thing to do, and I don't think it's the wrong thing to do, but it's not a realistic thing to do.
Correct, yeah. That's why, in the last, a few years ago, we created the operating reserve, which we didn't have previously, and that's so that we can set, start setting aside some of those funds for those eventualities, where either, like, geothermal shuts down for some reason and can't pay their bills for a year, or the state does something crazy and we have significant either cost increase or lose subvention or something like that. So, so that's what that operating reserve is primarily for. But our goal, you know, get through the fee rule, and then we'll come back with a reserve policy, and so then we can define what we should be targeting on all of our reserves, because right now, we have reserves and we have a good feel for what we think they need to be at, and yet, operating reserve isn't high enough. But we're trying to balance those things and get the staffing issues and those things done first, and then work our way to the setting of, getting a policy set so that we have that protection going forward.
So if I may paraphrase what I just heard, go through the process, finish up the fee schedule, and then mid-year budget, come back and see if there's any changes that need to be made based on the differences that that does for you.
Right, yeah. And it will really depend on when the fees, when we get through the process with the fees as to when the billing would happen, it may not, if we don't adopt the fee schedule until later.
It's not going to be retroactive.
This calendar year, we're not going to have any of that revenue during this fiscal year, so.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you.
Do you have your panel?
I did, actually. And I just mainly wanted to say thank you for your efforts in doing your reporting in-house, saving us, you know, six figures on the reporting and not having a contractor do it, that's a big lift, and it's much appreciated, your dedication to that. And I believe I know the answer to this, but with the Sonoma County reaping the benefits from the geothermal, and yet giving up the, some of the responsibilities for the monitoring, is there any, any financial support coming in from the geothermal as we're not reaping the benefits really as much, but for the air monitoring?
The short answer is no, because the way the GAMP MOU is set up, industry pays for all of the hard costs, and Lake County, Sonoma County, and even CARB were donating our time to do specific tasks that didn't cost dollars, they just cost time. So ours was, we do audits of all the monitoring stations, so we, we basically act like the, like CARB does for us. We monitor, we do audits, we verify that they're doing proper monitoring, we participate in the field inspections and things, so we do a lot of that work. Sonoma County, Northern Sonoma, was doing the financials. They're backing out of that, of course, because of that whole issue with the government financing versus, but private dollars, and, you know, which one do you follow, and tracking it through the county system versus through a private, you know, kind of bank account-type system. So that's, they're just tired of dealing with the financials and the financial process in Sonoma County, because they use the county treasury at Sonoma County, which, much bigger, has a lot more levels of issues to deal with. I'll say that nicely. And then the state was providing, they were doing x-ray analysis, they were doing, you know, so we send filters to them, they would do the evaluation for metals and things, so they'd do lab work for us. That was their part of the buy-in to the GAMP MOU. So the state doesn't do that anymore, and if they do, they charge for it. Sonoma County is backing out and doesn't want to participate because of their issues, and so, yeah, it's falling to us, and so.
How much more of a lift is it for us?
They had two people working on it in Sonoma County, so, you know, one was the primary and then a backup. So, I mean, we're looking at, to be honest, I don't know, you know, it'll be a full financial person, or we'll have to hire a consultant to do it for us. So, kind of depends on what we, what we can work out with admin and the auditor and treasury and stuff to figure out how we can deal with the financial part of it. So it's, just overseeing it is a significant amount of part-time.
Sure. That's unfortunate that we're not getting any support. Thank you.
Well, that's, that, it all comes out of permit fees, so.
Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the GAMP item, too. I know it's been a long process, and I'm glad that you're going to be bringing this back to us sometime soon. Do you have a timeline on when this might be coming back to us? I know, I know it's been hard.
For the MOU?
For the MOU.
We just started working on revisions, so we're hoping, the group that was working on it, we're hoping to have a draft by the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
So it'd probably be January, February to have something that.
Okay, great.
But if we have a really rough draft before then, we can bring it back to at least get some input as to which way, where things are going, and make sure that, you know, we don't spend a lot of time on something that's wasted effort.
Yep, that's probably a good idea. Great, thank you.
Supervisor Spatia?
Happy to take on the burden and liability of that, as long as Sonoma County is willing to pay us for what we need to be able to take it on. And if they don't, I think that we should have a conversation about us maybe having a conversation with Sonoma County, that you can't just drop the ball on something that you were responsible for now, forcing it into our hands and not providing any resources in exchange. I just, I think that it's, it's cocky.
Yeah.
They have more power than us, and they just get to drop the ball on us, and that's not how it works. And I, keep us posted, please.
Yeah, our one major negotiating point is, each of the regulatory agencies gets two votes on the GAMP consortium for any item. If they are no longer participating in the function of the GAMP consortium, then they should be giving up their votes. So, you know, you don't get to make a decision if you don't help.
I feel like we've been here before.
So, I mean, that's, that's the only thing we have right now that, that we can work on. But, yeah, we'll bring back, once we know, get a little bit farther down the road.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to the public, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item. I'll bring it back to the board. Lloyd, did you want to?
So it appears there's five items for your board to consider. With this being a public hearing, each of those items would need to be, the suggestion here would be to have those items be approved by motion, and I could walk your board through them if your board wishes for me to do so.
Yes, you can.
So the first item would be a motion to approve the fiscal year 25-26 draft budget proposed for the district, the Lake County Air Quality Management District.
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So just as a preface this, items two through five, and Director Gerhardt has alluded to this, that the rest of the items seems, can, can, seems to be, can be effectuated by, by direction of staff, is that right?
Yeah, we've done it through, we write it this way because at times, the board has wanted to do a more formal version, and we've had the direction of the board, and we've also had the lump resolution of, you know, we adopt all these things and agree to go forward in Gerhardt's direction, so.
So for, and I'll start with item two. For that particular item, it could be a motion your board could move. For that particular item, it could be a motion your board could move, or motion to direct staff to oppose any further state subvention cuts to the district. And is in, and support, uh, the district to pursue increased state subvention funding to cover legislative, legislative slash state mandates in rural communities. Seek additional funding to support the additional workload placed on the district.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
Then on to item three, that would be a motion to direct staff to continue to participate on the CAPCO of Board of Directors when feasible, and to take a more active role in future years to represent the needs and interests of Lake County related to air quality program funding, regulations, and benefits.
So moved.
Second. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Then on to item four, it would be a motion to direct staff to continue the policy directive that health impacts, health risks, health-based complaints and mandated programs slash requirements be given top priority, followed by activities that have regulatory timeframes and other funded activities, which includes new permit issuance, periodic inspections, and placing voluntary programs are, are on hold until all mandated programs are up to date.
So moved.
Second. You had something?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm slightly uncomfortable with putting that on record in a vote that voluntary programs are on hold. I don't have a list of all the voluntary programs. And I think that every department has mandates that they have to follow and then do their best for the other voluntary programs. But we don't provide a on-record vote that it's okay to put these voluntary programs on hold until further notice. If there's cracks in the capacity, if there's hours in the day that become open, then I think those things should be looked at and not, I, it just, it seems awkward to do it for one department and not other departments, because every department has its own struggles. I, I, I will be voting no if this goes to a vote as is, just because I don't want to say we're holding voluntary stuff. Uh, I think they can all, all have a level of importance depending on the individuals that are looking for it. We've had some of these discussions with some of agricultural folks that wanted to, uh, use some of the programs that were available, that we directed them towards the state. I, I just, for this one, I feel uncomfortable. I think they're going to be doing their best. They're going to be doing the mandates first because that obviously is a priority. But I don't make these statements for others and I guess I'm curious as to why I would for one department and not others.
Could we, did you want to answer or do, could we amend the?
I, I was just going to point, one, um, we're not a department. So this is a district with health and safety code mandates, um, which, you know, were mandated by health and safety code for specific programs and specific responsibilities. We are a regulatory agency. The, the voluntary programs, the really only the voluntary programs that we have are grant programs. And grant programs are significant time commitments in order to, to run them. So as soon as we have time available, we will run them. But what this does is say, we, we're, you're giving us direction to do all the mandated programs and then work on those programs, which like grants that are voluntary.
Well, you, you have the preference though to, to put that like last because you understand. But if we put hold, then that basically gives you the chance to say, we're not doing it because, you know, um, I, you.
Yeah.
I, I tend to see it the way you're putting it.
I, I just think that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, um, I feel this is us shielding you from complaints by approving this. We're trying to give you the resources to refill your positions, get a, uh, staff that can do all of these things. We support you, we don't want to throw you under the bus. But I also don't want to create a la, layer of linus blanket to make it more comfortable. Because again, every department has the discomfort of this situation. But you're mandated by the state, so I, we can't, we can't get between you and the state.
Yeah, no, and I, I have no problem changing that, that verbiage to be more appropriate to what you're comfortable with. And, um, but voluntary programs as available or as time permits and instead of, you know, on hold. Or when feasible or, yeah.
So one possible way on that motion language that I submitted for your board's consideration is to retain the motion language, but on that last clause, uh, as part of the direction of staff, to have staff, uh, come back to your board, uh, when it's, in situations where, uh, there's a proposal to place voluntary programs on hold until all mandated programs are up to date. That can be part of the direction of staff so that it's not a board direction of staff to place them on hold now. It's a direction of staff to bring it back to your board. If there is a proposal or the plan, uh, for your board's consideration, place it on hold. So your board will have an opportunity to, uh, state your input.
Why don't we just prioritize mandated programs?
Just get rid of the last sentence.
That's, that's fine with us.
Okay.
You know, having to put together another present, presentation.
All right.
That's a lot of extra work.
Yeah, my motion's amended to remove the last sentence.
Or that would be the last clause, starting with, and placing voluntary programs?
Voluntary programs are on hold until all mandated programs are up to date. That's the last sentence. Scratch off.
And so that would be the part of the motion.
Yeah, amended.
She amended with that change, all second. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, five zero zero.
Then the last item, uh, would be a motion to direct staff to work with county human resources and county administration to continue to review and develop improved recruitment and retention proposals for the district and to bring proposals to the Board of Directors for discussion and/or direction.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Supervisor Spatia?
I'm sorry, I, I just think this is another moot point. Every department has the chance. We've already opened up dialogue at this moment in time. I'm not sure that it needs to have a specific, again, if I do this for your, your department, your district, then this would be something that I would do similarly for all others. Because again, the issue of retention, the issue of recruitment is a county-wide issue. And we've already opened dialogue and I don't see the need to, again, put it on record for one department slash district and not all others.
With that, uh, should we amend or? Or are you fine with it?
I feel like we've been on record all the, on this before. We've had several items, so I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
All right, and you're comfortable with the second?
Yeah.
So they're comfortable with, yeah, so we'll just take.
I can add a little clarification if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, the reason for doing this is that it's again, comes back to health and safety code where the Board of Directors of the air district is the one that is supposed to be working to figure out these issues. So as the county board of supervisors, you are doing that. You're working with HR and you're working with the county on, on all the MOUs and all these things. But what we're doing is putting, tying that to the Board of Directors as well, saying, continue to work through this process that is already in process so that we can solve this problem going forward. So, so it's kind of giving us that tie between the two different entities.
Appreciate the explanation, not going to change my vote.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries four to one. Uh, with that, I think we have all, all of your, uh, items covered. And so thank you for that. If there's not anything else, we'll move on to our next.